Thank you, go ahead.
All right, well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. And although they may not hear us or see us, good evening to those at home. I'll try to say that later. I don't mean to be redundant, depending on what you've watched, listened to, or read in the past, but just as a courtesy to everybody here this evening. My name is Cormac Lynn. I have over 20 years in education. Started as a teacher, teaching social studies, knew that's what I wanted to do. Really, no definitive, you know, goal sheets of one day I'm going to be a superintendent. I just kept trying to challenge myself and be the best educator that I can, whether that's serving students directly, serving building leaders, and serving families, and other support staff within a school or within a system. You know, been a teacher, like I said, class advisor, academic dean, assistant principal, principal, and then currently serve in the role of superintendent. I serve 10 schools across mid-Michigan, three K-12 systems. And for me, you know, why the interest in the Oxford position? The thing that, two things that struck me that stood out in terms of Oxford, and just doing a little bit of research, are the opportunities that are available to the students, really, and I saw it today, was able to see it today firsthand, of the wide range of services and opportunities and experiences that are available to the students here. It is really significant, I'd say more so than many districts, and that's not to be critical of anyone else. One of the other things that stood out to me that I noted was the high rate of long-term service to the district, whether that be among administrators and/or teachers. And that was reinforced in the leadership profile report. So seeing that there was not constant or significant turnover indicated to me that this is a district that people enjoyed working in, felt comfortable working in and wanted to be in, and that's important for any new leader coming in. Hopefully, that evidence reflects what I believe it to reflect. And so those are the two things that stood out to me. You know, for me, I live in Clarkston, so being a little bit closer to home, being able to engage more in a school community. Currently, the closest school that I serve is an hour away, so that makes it a little more difficult to do some of the things that I would like to do. And so that creates an opportunity for me to serve the community in a little bit different way. You know, in particular, it was great today to meet with some of the students, whether that be formally during lunch, or just walking through the hallway, or walking through classes. And really, that's the best part of the day, when you're engaged with kids and able to work with them and support them. And so I am, again, exploring this opportunity to see how I may be a service to the Oxford Community School District. And so that's the short version. If anyone has any questions about that or about my history, I'd be happy to answer that. So please feel free, don't hesitate to reach out. And I appreciate everyone's time and energy today, whether someone had to be my host and guide me around today, or administrators that took time out of their day to walk me through their building, or teachers that stuck around after school, people who sacrificed their time, that could have been doing something else to help me better understand the district and better understand the challenges and opportunities that go along with this position. So, thank you.
Do we have some questions?
No pressure.
Shane had a question.
Okay. Well, I had a question that I asked.
Here, I will share the microphone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have a question regarding part of our curriculum, the social-emotional learning, the SEL component. I'm a former counselor here at Oxford High School, and I have always been extremely concerned about how children learn. And I know they learn best when they're emotionally mature and feel emotionally safe. And I know that there has been some controversy in the district about using so-called academic time for social-emotional learning, which I don't think you can separate between. Anyway, I would like to know what your feeling is about a social-emotional learning wraparound and how you would deal with the controversy about its usefulness.
Thank you for the question. And I referenced this previously as an educator, you may recall Maslow's hierarchy of needs. And if those needs aren't being met, in a general sense, the academic time that we have, if it's not going to be academic time on task, then it may not be effective. So objectively, not speaking about the specific program here, understanding that there needs to be that scaffolding to support that learning. And if that starts with the social and emotional wellness of a child, that definitely has to be part of that. They need to be prepared to learn. And if, for whatever reason, they're not, we need to try to help them get to that point. Now, perhaps, not knowing the specifics of the discussion or debate about that here, hypothetically, just thinking off the cuff, what I might consider about that particular issue is how do we identify those kids that may need more of that support, and either push support into that classroom in a way that will support that student, but also honor if other students in that classroom are ready and able to move forward with the instruction in a way that isn't going to harm either child or children in that room. Not everybody needs the same thing all the time. And I can tell you, you know, walking through the high school in particular today, one of the rooms that stood out to me, I don't remember the name of the room, right, but it was basically just what you're speaking to, a room where students could go and get that support, or take that break if they needed it. And so having that resource available to those students, one, we have to make sure they know it's available, and we have to make sure that our other teachers in the building understand that it's available, and students' access or ability to access it, and what that means in terms of their presence in that classroom. So we have to make sure that our students are ready to learn, and social-emotional wellness is a part of that. Again, I don't know the specifics about the program, so it's hard for me to comment on that. I also respect, as a teacher, and not that the teachers who are advocating for perhaps more academic time, at least as I'm interpreting your question, not that those-
Parents.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you for that clarification. All right. So again, as I've stated previously in other conversations, parents are going to advocate for what they think is best for their child. So we need to understand what they perceive that to be, and also try to help them understand that we do have that responsibility to all of our students. And how can we scaffold that support for that student that is ready, right? How can we differentiate our instruction in a way where perhaps we can provide that student who is prepared to do whatever that work is, to support them in a way that allows them to have that academic time, in a way that's purposeful, and intentional, and productive, while still supporting those other needs of our student? So those would be things that I would want to speak to teachers about. Let's talk about that class roster, let's talk about what those needs are on a spectrum or continuum. And again, if we identify students on this side, what is the support they need, those students in the middle, and those students at the other end? How do we try to do that? And that's a lot to ask, but that comes down to knowing our students and understanding what those needs are. And there are a lot of resources and support available. And I would hope that as professional educators, as many of our teachers are experienced and veteran, that we could differentiate our instruction in a way, and/or support, I might put that word in there as well, in a way that helps our students and meets their needs as much as possible.
Yeah. How do you envision that support being available? I think SEL is part of the curriculum here. So all students in a class are part of the learning of SEL. And there are parents who are wanting to opt out of SEL time so that their kids can review their spelling tests and math. And I, so it is something that's offered to all students.
Sure. So again, that is part of our commitment to educate the whole child, right? And that includes, obviously, the academic development, as well as their emotional development. And again, I'm always going to try to assume positive intent in apparent requests, and believe they're advocating for what is best for their child. And it is, it is going to be virtually impossible to meet every single individual demand, and that might be part of an education piece, like, let's talk about what this really is. And I would say, if that parent hasn't had a conversation with the appropriate staff member, whether that's a teacher, a support staff that pushes in, or the building principal, let's first make sure that we're, we may be talking about the same topic, we may not be interpreting the same way, so let's really have a conversation, and it might be part of an education piece for that building leader, or that teacher, as well as that parent. So if that is part of the curriculum, I would invite that parent to have a conversation, say, "Let's talk about what the goals and objectives of this piece of the curriculum, the SEL, are, and how we incorporate that, and let's talk about what we perceive to be the value of that for your child." I think that is part of educating and informing the whole child. And again, I'm always going to assume positive intent with the parents, and I'm going to have that conversation. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a straight no, it wouldn't necessarily be a straight yes, depending on the question, but in this context, let's have a conversation about that. And let's at least engage in that dialogue, so that I can make sure I'm understanding you, I can make sure that I'm correctly communicating and representing the intent of this aspect of our instructional time. And then let's have that conversation, once we make sure that we are on a similar plane in terms of our understanding of the program and what it's intended to do. And that's not to question what the parent has or believes, it's just to make sure that we're talking apples to apples, if you will.
So this was actually sent to me to ask you-
That's okay. Thank you for being here.
They're a parent, they have two kids, one in elementary and another one in middle school. I'm just going to-
That's fine.
All right. I would love to know how they feel about the failures of the Oxford High School while you were in the administration, and what qualifies you as an expert to speak on the topic.
Can you read that one more time, please?
Sure. I would love to know how you feel at the failures of the Oxford High School at the administration level, and what qualifies you as an expert to speak on that topic.
So I think the phrasing of that question, in some ways, is an answer to that question. I would not claim, at this time, to be an expert on, A, the administration, and/or B, the decisions that were made. And to speculate would be inappropriate, and to do so from an ill-informed position would not be appropriate either. So I would never claim to be an expert, but what I would commit to is seeking a deeper understanding of that experience, and seeking a better understanding of what the roles and responsibilities are. But I would not claim to be an expert, I would claim to seek understanding and understand, to the best of my ability, what did or didn't happen, and how we can learn from that. And one of the things, speaking to that, that came out in the report, as well as in the leadership profile, is really the obligation then becomes on the superintendent to ensure that our leaders, in whatever role they may serve, have a very clear understanding of what the expectations are, what the policies are, and what they should do in any number of situations, right? Because it came out very clear that there appears to be a lack of clarity or understanding around that, right? And that's why you have policy. When you have difficult positions, or decisions, or situations, you have policy to guide you through that process. That's why you have peers that you can call in to consult with. So I can't really answer that, not having been involved, not having enough information about, quote, "the administration," and nor do I have collective knowledge to be considered an expert in decisions that were made in that context. I think very few people could classify themselves of that, just given the nature of the tragedy in a school. There has to be expertise from many different perspectives, I would suggest, to really try to fully answer that question.
I have a follow-up. I can actually speak louder.
Well, you want to be able to pick you up.
Okay. So did you end up reading the Guidepost Report?
I did not read all 572 pages, I believe is what it is.
Yeah.
I have reviewed pieces of it, right? I have not read the whole thing. I have-
That was me questioning.
Yeah, that's fine. That's okay, you don't have to qualify who it came from. A member of the community, whoever that person may be. So I have reviewed pieces of it, but I have not read all 572 pages of it.
Thank you.
Some other questions?
This side of the room is quiet.
Yeah.
And that's okay.
What do you see as the biggest problem for you to encounter coming into the district after the district has experienced such trauma?
This also came out in the leadership profile. And it's been clear today in my conversations with many different groups, that everyone's need in relation to the tragedy is different, and that there's no one-size-fits-all answer to addressing those needs. And I also get the impression that there, you know, as we are a school, a school system, again, not to minimize any of the experiences associated with the tragedy, but that there is, there is a recognition and/or desire among some of our community to honor that experience and respect the experience associated with the tragedy, but also keep in mind that we have, we have a mission as a school system to continue to educate. And I get the sense that some people see those two missions potentially in conflict with one another, that if you are advocating for one, you are thereby default not advocating for the other, doesn't matter either topic. And so I think one of the challenges would be helping people understand, and see, and demonstrate through our actions, that you can do both. And that we need to do both, because that is what, from my reading and from my conversations today, those are two important needs that exist in our community. And I think the challenge is going to be working with the community, and those who might have more needs on one portion of those two equally important, equally valid needs and concerns, to try to honor them both, and move both of those needs forward. I think that's a significant challenge in response, in relation, and follow-up to the tragedy.
And that sounds like a whole-child approach.
So the statement was, "That sounds like a whole-child approach." I'm going to promote a whole-child approach in any capacity, because we know that's best for our students and best for our staff. So I hope that we would integrate such an approach, whether we're talking about academic performance, overall well-being, engagement, or a specific response to specific needs from this community.
I was given another question. Okay, so this is another question from someone else. Have you watched our board meetings? What is your sense for how to lead in a way that honors our victims, where you kind of just answer that, and their families, to differentiate yourself from past failed leaders?
So I can't speak to the actions of past leaders. I will tell you, again, very honestly and transparently, that that same question has been asked by a number of different groups that I've met with today. And that answer is multifaceted. Okay, so I'd have to do a little bit of homework in terms of the public acts and the laws associated with a public meeting, okay? So we would also have to accept that if that is something that we are obligated to provide, we have to accept that, right? We also have to understand that people are going to advocate for their family and for their children. And I believe it's part of the board, and the role of the superintendent, to be that sounding board. The board and myself, by association, represent the community. And I would not propose or advocate for, you know, stopping kind of public comment, you know? I don't think that that would be necessarily helpful. And I recognize the, the impact that the tragedies had on our community and our family members. And if we can try to help them through that process by giving them the opportunity to speak, I think that's something that we can do. I recognize that there is a sentiment among some in our community, that perhaps the way in which those feelings have been expressed has not been helpful or productive. I think with anything that hopefully can begin with, you know, some direct communication, right? As I stated in my previous conversation, you know, I'm always going to prefer face-to-face dialogue and conversation. And I'm going to try to work with any member of our community to help understand, better understand what those concerns are. I'm going to do my best to represent what the district can or may not be able to do for any number of different reasons. And I'm going to hope through dialogue that we can come to a better understanding. But again, I also respect that a parent is going to advocate for his or her child. And as I would for my own children.
That first part of the question was, if you watch the school board meetings?
I've seen bits and pieces, yeah.
One of my questions is, how important are the, do you consider the roles of the students in the decisions going forward within the community and for the schools?
Just a blanket, just run-of-the-mill kind of stuff, decision?
Well, I mean, going for, so there's a lot of distrust within the community and the schools and stuff, which I'm sure you're aware of. So I know, for instance, what I'm referring to, or alluding to, I guess, is the memorial that was starting was supposed to be a student-led movement, right? And kind of let the students take the lead, and they were dismissed, and the teachers took over. There are some students that have said that they, you know, have gone down for, because they're reactive, right? They're being activated for whatever reason, because we have trials, we have settings, we have hearings, other stuff, and have been dismissed. So what roles, I know 2025 is going to be graduating next year, and they were freshmen, but then we have a whole bunch of siblings in the middle school. So what roles, how important are, do you decide to make, that's not right.
I know what you mean, I believe.
Like having them, like them having a say, the students having a say moving forward.
So going back to kind of the first question, right? Supporting that whole child, right? And there are many conversations or discussions or topics that we should seek student input on. I can't speak to the specific past things that have or have not occurred with the memorial. So I can't speak to those specifics, but when I was meeting with the high school students today, we kind of talked about some opportunities where there's ways they can engage, or I can engage with them, right? Some of that might be very formal, kind of, you know, sit-down, some of it might be informally. I ask them, you know, it's my understanding, you really don't, you like the communication platform that the school uses, right? So what would you like to use, right? And so there might be some more informal dialogue that takes place on that. You know, that's a good venue for students to voice their opinions or concerns, right? Another thing that I've offered to many different people I've spoken with today, you know, one of the things that I would like to be able to do is essentially establish, you know, basically office hours in each building, right, where it's kind of on the schedule ahead of time, right? Be there, kids get there, parents want to park and come in and have a conversation before pickup, right? And that would include time for staff and students as well. That means, you know, sitting down in the cafeteria, one of the things I've done in the past, especially with incoming students, is, you know, this was on Tuesdays, because pizza day was Tuesday. And so I would buy them pizza for lunch, right, and we would go off into a smaller dining room, right, and I would meet with those new students, alphabetically dispersed into the alphabet, and let's, hey, what's your experience like? You know, what do you need? What do you like? What could be better? What's your feedback? Because whether you're a teacher, or administrator, or superintendent, sometimes people associate things with a certain title, and they're more or less comfortable of having those conversations. So I think it's important, especially for our kids, and you're not in the building every day as a superintendent, so intentionally to push into that building and make yourself available, and to try to remove some of those perceived barriers based on a physician title. You know, in the past, again, as a building leader, I would spend half an hour outside every day doing crosswalk duty. Literally put on a traffic vest, if it's raining, you get the umbrella. And yes, there are always other things that I could have been doing, but that was an opportunity for me to engage with kids outside of the classroom, have a conversation, have some jokes while they're standing there waiting for traffic to clear. So trying to be intentional to find ways to engage kids that is outside of perhaps the normal mode of school. So things like office hours, things like social media, and utilizing the groups that might exist, whether that's a student council, or other various student groups, based on what topic we're kind of talking about. But give them an opportunity to have a voice. Now, there are decisions that students may have more voice in, or more say, and there may be some that they have less. That doesn't mean that they weren't heard, or they didn't have an opportunity to weigh in. I think the obligation then is, is if there's clearly a strong feeling one way or the other, this is an opportunity for them to learn, okay, let me try to help you understand the factors that went in the decision-making process, right? When I taught, you know, government or civics, right, that's something that we tried to do, give them a question, what do you think? What are the pros? What are the cons? What are the consequences of making this decision? And that would be a learning opportunity for students. Like, it doesn't mean you weren't heard. It doesn't mean that we didn't value your opinion, right? And whether it's students or anybody else, the same is true, right? We want to model that behavior. But here are the factors, and some of those you may not be able to share. And you might have to say, you know, for any number of reasons, I can't go into the specifics. But if you've built that trust, and you've built that rapport, I would believe that whether it's a staff member, or a parent, or students, that hopefully, over time, they would, they would trust you, that you were being honest and forthright with them, and sharing what you can. And hopefully, they would also trust that you're making a decision that you think is in the best interest of the organization. And sometimes, that doesn't always align with what a student might want, all right? Again, doesn't mean it's not valid.
Right.
But we have to consider, how do we move the school forward the best way possible?
I have a follow-up. So there, towards the end of your answer, you were talking about, you know, hopefully they have the trust to know that I'm doing what's right. We don't have a lot of trust.
Sure.
So how would you go about rebuilding trust, not just within the staff and the students, but also community at large?
Well, part of that's going to be just your communication in general, you know, making sure that you're trying to communicate where and when you can, ideally more proactively than reacting to a request for information. And again, the challenge from a school perspective is, there's some things you can share and some things that you can't, especially if you're dealing with students, right? We have an obligation to protect all students. And so sometimes, that unfortunately puts a school or a district in a position where we can't share certain things. And in my own experience, that is perceived as not being transparent. And schools can't always respond to certain questions, because that might put a student at risk. And so that's difficult. So making sure that you communicate proactively, clarify what you can or cannot share, and maybe laying out some of those standards, right, to help the community, help students, help staff and faculty understand what you can or can't share, and why. So first of all, being communicative, right? And that means a lot of different things, whether that's an email, or a newsletter, or, you know, proactively reaching out to families, or having consultations with families. It's not going to happen overnight, you're going to have to build it, right? And to your comment, that's definitely something that needs to be a focal point for the next superintendent. And being accessible as well, right? And it may not be that exact minute, but I always try to tell a parent or a colleague if they send the email, or they make a request, if I cannot respond to them immediately, or, you know, by the end of that day, I'm at least going to acknowledge that and say, "Hey, listen, I've received your email, I've gotten your phone call, can you give me a time tomorrow, or Thursday, or Friday, depending on the concern, that I can, you know, block out for you to make sure that we can have the time to have the conversation?" And a lot of times, part of that might be making sure that you take the time, as an educator, to truly reflect on the question. And so I might be reaching out to that parent and say, "I've seen your call, seen your email, I need to do a little bit of my own research, and I want to make sure I give this a time that your question is due, so make sure that I can respond appropriately." Because I don't want to bring someone in for a meeting and say, "I'll have to get back to you, let me..." So it might just be that follow-up, say, "Am I clearly understanding your question, your care, your concern? Okay, let's find that time, if I can have 24 or 48 hours, depending on the situation." You're going to have to earn it over time, and I know that trust is hardly won and easily lost. And we're not going to be perfect, we're all human, we all make mistakes, but making sure that we try to have some standards and expectations in terms of how we try to respond to some of those questions, comments, or concerns.
Thank you.
So Mr. Lynn, you've met with a number of our stakeholders today, become familiar with certain aspects of our district. What, from your past experience, do you think is going to benefit you coming in with what you learned today in Oxford?
So thank you for that question. I do truly believe good teaching is good teaching in the school that you're working at, or the learning model that may be taking place. There's still fundamental best practices, whether it's the social-emotional piece, supporting students, or what helps students learn. So I think regardless of where I've been in the past, right, I've taught every year that I've been in education, in some way, shape, or form. So I think continuing to work with students, whether it be at the college level or the high school level, more recently at the college level, has helped me keep a little bit of a pulse on the classroom. It's different at the college setting, but making sure that I don't forget what that experience is like. In terms of my past experiences, specific to Oxford, and I shared this before, and I'm not making a comparison between anyone's experience or situation, but we've had some safety situations in our school. We haven't had significant injury, but we've had, you know, significant police response, and I've seen the impact that can have. In January, you know, again, from a student safety standpoint, we've dealt with some social media threats and responded to that. So I think in terms of the concern about safety, and feeling comfortable in an environment, I have some experiences recently that can help me try to better understand that, right? I can never fully understand that, and never would expect to say that or that I can, but to have some understanding of what some of those needs might be. I think in my role as a leader of a school- I think in my role as a leader of a school or a school system, I shared with some of the groups today, you know, in my experience, it's different than maybe the perception of, of a public school principal position. And that's not to, to be critical of any public school principals. But when you're the principal in many non-public schools, you are essentially the CEO of that organization. So it's, yes, it's, it's the operation of the building, but it's also the operation of the institution. You're doing a lot of work with, with finances, a lot of work with strategic planning, a lot of work with board development. So working with the board, whether it be at the district level or at a, at a school level that has a governing board. So that, that policy development at a, at a district level is something that I've done before, again, working with boards. And I, I think, you know, having a fresh perspective, being able to come in here relatively open-minded and, and try to see things that perhaps have gone unnoticed or that perhaps haven't been given attention that they deserve, not at anybody's intentional failure to do so, but just coming in with a very different perspective, a fresh perspective, trying to be, bring that fresh set of eyes. Sometimes you're too close to it to see some things. You know, working with students from, from many different areas. We have a diverse student body throughout the state of Mid-Michigan, reflecting the community. You know, having worked with international students in the past, I know COVID changed a lot of that for a lot of schools. Working with shared time, so having some exposure to that and understanding that program from, from the partner side, working with the public school. A little bit of my own experience, just in terms of family members that have taught in public schools, right? Things of that nature that helped give me some perspective that I can bring to bear to support the Oxford community.
I've got more questions.
Okay.
Can you ask how he will use data to drive decisions and inform board admin and bring transparency to the community?
So we've had some conversations today, whether it's on a, a kind of social emotional wellness perspective. Obviously, I talked to the number of people that were responsible for standardized testing today and some of the work that was going into that. Also had conversations about the benefits of that, that state or federal, depending on the program or the test, standardized testing as well as more local assessments that are more reflective of goals that have been established by the district, right? So it's about balancing that data and really making sure that what we're measuring is important to us and reflects our, our, our vision and our mission and our strategic goals. So we definitely had some conversations today around that. So I'm going to lean towards those individuals who are working with that standardized testing, you know, tracking things, you know, office referrals. We had some conversations around attendance today and how strong attendance was. And so making sure that, that some of our assumptions or, or beliefs, and not that they're wrong, right? But make sure that they're reinforced by that data. So then we talk about decision-making processes and the utilization of resources or the investment of resources is based not only on what we see with our own eyes, but that we have, again, that, that secondary set of evidence from student output or staff output and that we're not being too narrowly focused because perhaps we didn't speak to somebody or didn't consider seeking someone out. So obviously from the academic standpoint, right? We're going to look at some standardized tests, we're going to look at some localized testing. And what I said to some groups today and perhaps even last time I was with the community, you know, making sure when we're talking about programs, to have a metric, like, hey, what are the goals that we want to see from this program? How do we measure that? Some things are easier, easier to measure than others. Some things take more work, right? But let's define what our desired outcomes are for certain programs and let's measure it. And if, if it's not accomplishing the goal that we have for it, let's identify if, if we can address that. If we identify it, but we can't address it, okay, what does that mean for the future of, of that program? And if it's not accomplishing what we want it to do, well, then it's not the best use of our resources, right? And, and some of that data is going to be very structured, like the standardized test data. Some of that might be informally through surveys and things of that nature. And it might be through a very informal conversation where intentionally talking to kids and, you know, to get perhaps what might be a more authentic response and to track that over time and be able to say, okay, I've done some unofficial data gathering, some unofficial surveys and things of that nature. So it's going to be important that we make sure we have that building level data, maybe that grade level data, depending on if we're talking about a curriculum decision or things of that nature. And make sure that that is also combined with what we believe that we're seeing and that we get a holistic view of that. In, in some cases, some cold data can be very helpful and sometimes that cold data might be a little bit misleading. And we need to have that qualitative analysis versus a quantitative analysis and bring some of those together and understand the context where one type of data is more or less helpful. And just try to take a holistic picture when we talk about the allocation of resources, whether that's, you know, our staff or our financial resources to make sure that, that it's matching the goals. One of the things that, that I'm working with right now with, with our school council, you know, we just did a planning day on the 15th. And I challenged them to say, if, if we want to start a program or if we want to bring an initiative forward, it's going to be my expectation that we bring that to the group, that we are going to directly tie that to our strategic plan, right? Because that strategic plan should be built on some of that data in terms of what we're doing well, what we need to improve on, and where we may have new goals, right? So making sure that in the decision-making process with the board, right? It's my obligation to say, this initiative, cost X, connects to our primary goals of A, B and C, is not redundant. Or if it is, how we're going to adjust for that and really think not just about this year, but long-term, what, what commitment are we making? Because we want, we don't want to do stops and starts in terms of that support. So making sure that if we're going to bring a program and roll it out, that we have a clear process to carry that out in a way that's meaningful and we know that sustained support, whether it's professional development for our staff or support for our students is, is best. We don't want to do a one and done. So it has to be viable over the period of time that we think we need to be effective.
This is the meat follow-up. When you were talking about standardized testing and stuff, do you feel that standardized tests are the best way to gauge students, let's say productivity and the actual knowledge that they require? And then my second part is, do you feel or how do you think that the trauma is going to impact our standardized test scores?
Okay, so the first part of that question, is it the best measure? It is, it is a measure. And I'm not giving you an example, depending on the test, how it's written. And I say this to my, my future teachers that I work with at the university level. As a social studies guide, do I want them to remember some dates? It'd be nice, right? It'd be nice if you could be in the right decade, right? And if you don't know, take a half a century or a century. But if I had to pick and choose between knowing certain dates and having certain skills, that might be a little bit harder to measure on a standardized test because it's not intended to measure that skill. I always say to my students, I would much rather take the development of an academic skill over the memorization of, of a fact. And the joke is, well, if you're on Jeopardy, that'll be great for you. It's probably not going to happen. But I always will promote the development of academic facts because that will transcend that class, that will transcend that content area and that will benefit them moving forward in whatever they do. So it is a measure, it is not the only measure. It, it may be a measure that helps us understand are the curriculum resources that we're using helping us accomplish our goals? And, and we know some students test well, some students don't test so well. And again, from my own experience, if you're taking a standardized test. So what do the results mean for me on this test as a student? Well, it's really important to us as a district, so we want you to do your best. But it doesn't impact my grade and it doesn't impact graduation. Okay, thank you for sharing that with me. And you can see the students where that, you know, devalues the test for them. And, and I know, I mean, my own kids have to sit down and take standardized tests and especially at the early elementary level, like, you can't spend a lot of time in standardized tests. And so we have to decide, how do we gather that information? So it's a measure, it's not the only measure, right? It should be a part of a, of a holistic set of data or information that we use. Again, going back to the very beginning, right? The whole child. Second question was, how is that going to impact our, our test scores? That, that's difficult to answer. Do I expect students to be distracted, if I could put it that way? Sure, there's going to be disruption in learning for a period of time and I don't think that's specific to a, a district building. There's going to be conversations that take place that may take place at the cost of some academic instruction. Again, kind of going back to where we started. And I think that's true coming out of COVID. I don't think that's necessarily a specific Oxford challenge. And especially at the high school level, when we had, for a period of time and still continue to have schools that make tests optional, and that's begun to swing, swing back a little bit. But if I'm a high school student and the ACT or the SAT is not going to be a required part of my college admission and so I sit down as a junior to take the PSAT, similar situation, like, ah. Okay, if I do well, great, if I don't, that's okay, it's not really going to matter to me. So I think for a number of reasons, you know, could scores dip? Sure, for a lot of different reasons. I think that we need to, to be objective to a degree and say, okay, are these changes because of the instruction? How can we measure that? Or are these changes a result of factors, not that are beyond our control, but that we have to be honest with ourselves and allow for it to a certain degree, right? But then our obligation is to say, okay, we recognize this data, we recognize this decline. So how then are we going to adjust our instructional time and/or priorities to reinforce some of that, right? And there, there's been a, a ton of discussion and dialogue and writing on learning loss during COVID and things of that nature. And, and that's not going to be cured in one standardized test cycle. And so I think it's important in that context that we take a medium to long-term view, right? And we're not going to get kids maybe back to where we want them to be in a year, depending on what that experience is like for them, and every kid is a little bit different. So understanding that we have to build that over time and it's going to be a marathon, not a sprint, to perhaps, if those scores do shift, to try to adjust for that, if that's something that is a priority for the district.
Another sent in question. Can you ask how he will assess the gaps in the recovery plan to support the students and staff and the untold stories of the students and staff suffering in silence?
So in conversations today, there, there has been some talk about that and really, we, we need to be able to have those conversations. And most importantly, we need, I would hope that individuals that feel those gaps exist or feel they need more support, we need to be, make, make sure we're asking the questions and we need to create an environment where people feel comfortable coming out and communicating what those needs are. Because it can be difficult and we, we don't, as I said previously, it's not a one-size-fits-all for what that recovery and support might look like. And so one of the things that we would definitely want to make sure we're doing, I'm not saying it isn't happening now, right? We talk about relationships. Our teachers will be pretty good about identifying, you know, whether it's this student or that student, you know, something, something that, you know, is not quite right or I've noticed a change, right? And that's where we have to have those internal communication systems to be able to identify that. And so whether someone self-verbalizes that need, whether someone observes that need, we need to make sure that we continue to support that individual. And again, the word gaps were used and I don't know specifically what those gaps may be, but it's going to take open and honest communication to help us see that. Because again, depending on, on your experience, I may not perceive some of those gaps because I wasn't here during, during the tragedy. So making sure that as teachers, as educators, if we see them as parents, as community members, if, if we perceive that there's a gap, bring that to our attention. And, and there may be cases where we've done certain things or certain things are going on and maybe they haven't been as, as advertised in terms of that it's out there or for any number of different reasons. So it's really going to start with the communication piece and making sure that those resources are being pushed out to the areas that we need them most.
Another question. In your current school, what parts of the EOP are public?
So I'd have to go school by school because in, in some ways those schools are, I mean, legally, they're separate entities. And so I don't want to misrepresent any of my colleagues. I, I will tell, and I'm making an assumption here of where that question is going. And so if I'm wrong, I welcome that person to text in and clarify. We, we do have, we do have a discussion on the balance between communicating our plan and communicating our plan in a way that someone could use against us, if you will. And, and that's a debate that I think you will find people, again, across the spectrum. And, and that's my assumption of, of where that question is going and I might, and I might be wrong. And so, you know, I can't say with certainty right now off the top of my head how many of our schools were there published online or if a parent was to ask, would they be allowed to see them? And I don't want to misrepresent any of my colleagues or any of our schools in that capacity. But again, I, I would ask, my expectation would be, if someone has a question on that, right? Ask a specific question and then our obligation is to respond and clarify why we can, can't, will or won't share that. And that may not be the answer that someone is seeking, but I at least want to try to help them understand why we may be in that position. And if the answer is yes, we can share it, right? Then we, we want to do that, right? We may not be knowingly withholding or intentionally withholding information. But I definitely understand the concern that some people may have. You know, if, if you, if you share too much, you are empowering someone with intelligence that can be used against you.
They, they had asked if you know what sections are currently public and yet at your current school. Do you have any ideas or?
I can't say with certainty and again, I, I don't want to misrepresent based on the individual schools and what they may or may not have done. I would say this, that, that we do not have a formal policy that exists regarding what needs to be, is or should be public. So schools at this point, in a general sense, would be able to make that decision locally. But there is no policy clearly in place or currently in place that creates a, a firm expectation of what is or is not available publicly.
Are there any other questions? Yes? Let's say I won't.
Always, you don't, not yet.
I appreciate the text to friend questions from home, thank you. That's the beautiful thing about being online, right? Again, we can, we can do many things at once, so in all seriousness, I appreciate it.
I'm interested in knowing what, what your thoughts are about parental rights. That phrase has become a political hot potato. And how do you see parental rights in general? And as it's being used by groups who want to impose their rights on other parents?
So that, you're right, that, that, that term can be a loaded term. And I think in, in, in the public school realm, right? You know, first of all, we have to, we have to uphold what our obligation is under state law to provide a free and appropriate public education. Now there's different views on what is or is not included in that. I think it's important in the curriculum development process that there be some dialogue with, with parents. I know there's a curriculum committee, I don't recall if there's parents on that specifically off the top of my head, right? But to have conversation and dialogue on what may or may not be included. And again, being a public school, it's different than, than being a non-public school. And, and the same argument, and I, I don't mean that to be critical, but the same premise, would be a better word, happens in non-public schools about certain things that do or don't happen in schools. And so I think our obligation is to be clear and transparent, that this is what our curriculum is or is not. This is what it includes, this is what it does not include. And kind of using the, the EOP example, right? If, if we can share some of the, the curriculum apps and pacing guides and share some of those resources so that people can understand what it is or is not, I'm always going to invite the conversation, I'm always going to listen. But depending on, on an individual's perspective, we, we may not be able to come to a, a common agreement on, on what should or should not be included. But we, we should be transparent about what that is or is not. And there should be conversation, I, I would say, you know, whether it's the school board that represents the community or other parent organizations, conversation with teachers who serve our students every day and being able to communicate why we do certain things from a curriculum standpoint is important and engaging with our parents is important. But that, that, that term parental rights can be used a lot of different ways. And I'm a parent and there are certain things that, you know, for my own kids, I've supported and certain things that I haven't. And that's where appropriate, my choice as a parent, it's not a judgment necessarily. My choice as a parent, it's not a judgment necessarily on anyone else. That's what I think is right for my kids, so.
So, Mr. Lynn, we're down to about our last five minutes. We have another question. Is there anything that you would like to leave us with?
Sure.
To prevent us running out of time.
Thank you for that. So I just want to thank all of the people that made today possible, whether it was the courtesy of driving me around the district, whether it was administrators that took time out of the day to walk me around the building, to help me learn more about the community, teachers that stuck around after school, sitting down with the kids, giving up their social lunch, so they could talk to this random guy that's in the building today, you know, interrupting class, talking with some teachers, talking with some students. Just thank you to all those people that made today possible, and allowed me to better understand this community. And for some of the very frank and honest conversations, whether it was from community members, whether it was from teachers, students, and other members of the staff and faculty here, it's important that we have that type of conversation. And I just appreciate the opportunity to be with everybody today. So I think that's the primary message, and if we have time, maybe I'll throw some in there later, but not that important.
We have one more question?
Again, since you made that comment about text-to-friend, it came in, what is your opinion to the best sex ed curriculum?
Is that a specific curriculum? Or which is the best?
Sure. That was the question. What is your opinion to the best sex ed curriculum?
So, again, being very honest, right, that answer's going to be different in the public school world. And I have not been in a position to evaluate, from a public school perspective, what that looks like. And so I'm not informed enough to be able to evaluate a curriculum that would be appropriate in the public school environment. So unfortunately, I can't really answer that question in this context. I can't answer it efficiently, or effectively, or honestly, because I don't have that information.
Thank you. So with that, we've got a couple of minutes left.
Yeah, I appreciate those people who are joining us at home. Thank you, whether you're listening or watching, thank you for that. I appreciate the passion that I saw today throughout the district. And some of that was passion that was calling us to be better, and I understand that, in many different ways, not just in any single way, but calling us to be better, calling us to serve our students, in a way that reflects our mission. And there are many facets of that mission. And so it would be my hope to do that to the best of my ability, to serve our community, to serve our students, and to help them, you know, fulfill that graduate profile that we have for them, and help to provide them opportunities. Equally important to support our staff, whether they be, you know, support staff, office professionals, teachers, administrators. Education has become an increasingly demanding job in the last decade. And I know, I heard it today, and I saw it in the engagement with students, that many of the staff members throughout the district, I can't tell you how many kids I heard called by name. And we're not talking about small schools, right? So how many kids by administrators I heard reference by name, speaking specifically to things that are going on in their life, right? Acknowledging them as an individual, making meaningful connections, right? And again, we'll maybe end with right where we started, right? So I saw a lot of individuals within the school community demonstrate their care and compassion for their students, in ways that are going to help them grow. We had some great conversations, with the acknowledgement that there are many difficult conversations moving forward, and many difficult challenges. And regardless of who was in that position, it's going to be hard. And if I can play a role in helping the district decide who that person is, regardless of who that individual is, I'm happy to be able to support the district in that way. And I forget who we were at, but one of the educators, they're rolling something out, oh, is it the Teacher Academy that they're going to roll out next year, I believe? And I said, yeah. I said, hey, even if I'm not here, I'd love to come in and help you with that, because if I can help support future teachers, right, we all need that. And so I'm excited about that. Obviously, from an education perspective, I'm a little bit biased. But again, just the opportunities that are available to kids in this district is really outstanding. I think that this district has a lot to be proud of, in terms of what it offers its students. It doesn't mean that we do everything perfect, or do everything perfectly every day. But I saw a lot of great things, I saw a lot of people engage with kids, I saw a lot of kids that looked like they were having a good day in school, and that's important. So I appreciate the time, and I appreciate the opportunity to be present in so many different buildings today. So thank you for your time, thank you for being here, thank you for being at home, and taking time out of your evening to be with us.
We want to thank you, Mr. Lynn, for being here with us today, committing your day to interacting with our stakeholders, with our students. And I want to thank our community members for all being here this evening, offering some great questions from here and abroad. And we do have a couple QR codes, for those of you that are here this evening, to be able to log on, complete a survey, and provide your feedback to the board, as they look at making a decision going forward. So please take the time to complete that tonight, and thank you.
Have a great spring break.
Thanks. Yes?
Thank you, everybody, appreciate the time. If anybody wants to speak informally, if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Have you ever been involved with public schools?